I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to our Revelation study. We are starting in Revelation chapter 10, but since we've been out for a couple of weeks, I'd like to go back and just go back to Revelation 6 and work our way back up. So I want to go back and just talk about the sealed judgments in Revelation 6. When the tribulation period starts, you remember that the Antichrist reveals himself on a white horse? And then after that, we have the red horse, which is the horse of war. And that parallels with Matthew chapter 24 and the Olivet Discourse of all those things that will occur. There'll be wars and rumors of wars. So we have the red horse, the black horse, which is the horse of famine that follows war. A lot of times when you have war, you end up with famine following that. Then you have the pale green horse that is the horse of pestilence, disease, and that kind of thing. And so after those four sealed judgments have been revealed, one quarter of the earth's population has been destroyed. And so you can imagine how awful that is going to be early on in the tribulation period. And then the fifth seal that we see, we see the souls of those that are martyred during the tribulation period. They're under the altar in heaven, and they are saying, "How long, oh Lord, will you not avenge the blood, our blood upon the earth?" And then in the sixth seal judgment, there is a great earthquake. And you remember there, the sun is blackened as sackcloth, the moon turns as blood, the heavens depart as a scroll, and men of all backgrounds, you know, men and women of all backgrounds, whether they're rich or poor, whether they're slave or whether they're a ruler, they all hide themselves in the rocks and in the caves, and they yell out for the rocks to fall upon them because the wrath of the Lord has come. And so we see that in Revelation 6, in the beginning of the tribulation period. And by this time, a multitude of people have lost their lives. And then it seems that there needs to be this period of a parenthesis of God's grace. And that's how we see the tribulation period go, is that God brings out the six seals. And then between the sixth seal and the seventh seal, there's a parenthesis of grace. It's almost as if to say, you know, you've seen a quarter of the earth's population destroyed. Now we need to step back because we just can't take anymore. And God gives grace and reaches out in His grace for people to be saved. So there's the tribulation is a time of judgment, but it is also a time of a great harvest of souls and people coming to know the Lord. And so in Revelation 7, we have that parenthesis of God's grace, where 144,000 Jewish witnesses, and it names those from each tribe, talks about what tribe they will come from, they will be sealed of God in their foreheads, and they will preach the gospel, and multitudes of people will come to know the Lord. And so this is a parenthesis of God's grace. And then on in Revelation chapter 7, you will see a multitude around the throne of God praising God. And one would ask, who, you know, who are these? John said, "Who are these that are here?" And it's one of the elders that answers and said, "These are they that came out of great tribulation. God has washed their robes in the blood of the Lamb," and they're praising God. And so we have the six seals, and between the sixth and seventh seal is that parenthesis of God's grace. And multitudes of people come to know the Lord, and then we see the scene in heaven of people praising God. Well, it is in Revelation chapter 8 where the seventh seal is open. And the seventh seal then contains the seven trumpet judgments. And then we go and we get to the seventh trumpet, and it contains the seven bowl judgments. And so this scroll is opening up. So really, all of the rest of the tribulation period that we find is found in the seventh seal. When the seventh seal is open, it opens the seven trumpet judgments. And then when the seventh trumpet is open, it opens the seven bowl judgments. So the first trumpet, then, you remember, comes, and he makes a sound of the trumpet, and that's that first trumpet judgment, and that is in Revelation chapter 8. And when he does that, it burns up a third of all the trees all across the world and burns up all of the grass. So it's an attack upon the land and the vegetation being burned up when that... And this is really in response. You remember to those that are crying out at the altar and the Lord, that angel takes the... He takes the embers and puts them upon the altar. It comes up into the nostrils of God, and then the judgment goes forth upon the earth. And you remember in the fifth seal, they were crying out, "Oh Lord, how long will you not avenge our blood upon those?" And then in Revelation 8, the same type thing. It is the prayers of the saints calling out for judgment that causes and sets in order these trumpet judgments. So the first one comes out, and it's fire upon the vegetation, a third of the trees, the grass. And then the second trumpet that we studied about, a third part of the sea is destroyed, a third part of the sea creatures, a third part of the ships. And then there was the third angel sounded, the third trumpet. And the Bible says that there was fire that fell upon the third part of the rivers. There was a star that fell from heaven, and that star was called Wormwood. And that Wormwood was bitter or poisoned, and it poisoned a third part of the rivers. And the Bible just explicitly says that many people died from the poison of those waters that they were drinking. And so it just, you know, it just took their life. And then the fourth part, the fourth angel sounded, the trumpet, and a third part of the moon and a third part of the stars and the sun. The Bible says a third part of the sun became darkened. And so what you see in those trumpet judgments that we studied about was that there was judgment upon the land, there was judgment upon the sea, there was judgment upon the rivers, and then there was judgment upon the heavens. And the heavens that normally declared the glory of God began to declare the judgment of God. And then when we see the fifth trumpet, we get over into chapter 9, and we see that we move the scene from the judgment of heaven to the judgment coming out of hell. And what happens there is that the Bible says that there's a star that falls from heaven, and it was given to him the key to the bottomless pit. And it's not just a regular star. This is an individual. It is Satan himself that falls from heaven. He's given a key to the bottomless pit. And you remember that we studied those angels that have been bound since their sin, all the way back in Genesis 6, and other angels that are bound or demons that are bound in the abus of the bottomless pit. And that's where they don't want to go. They don't want to be there. You remember when the Lord was casting the demons out of leech? And they said, "Lord, please don't send us to the abuso." They didn't want to go there. So he sent them into the swine. They ran off into the lake, and they drowned themselves. And so here are, and when the fifth angel sounded, Satan himself falls from heaven. He's bound to the earth. The demons are bound to the earth, and he goes and he unlocks the key to the bottomless pit. And out of there comes multitudes of demons that attack the earth. And they're in the form of, they're described as locusts, and they're able to sting and to hurt people with terrible, awful pain. And I don't know if you've ever seen anybody that's demon possessed. When I've been on foreign mission trips, it's just almost sure that you see people that are just demon possessed. And we've had situations where people dealt with demons at our ministry, where they would just scream out, well, it's like a painting that you don't, you can't even describe. These demons will come, and they'll attack multitudes of people for five months. They won't kill them. They won't die. They'll beg to die, but they won't be able to die. And so those demons will torture them for five months, and the pain will be unbearable. And they will wish like everything, they could die, but they won't be able to die. And then the sixth trumpet sounds, and there's a 200 million man army that is possibly an army of demons also. So we see hell just having its fury up on the earth during those times of that... of that period of time of those trumpet judgments. And so then a third of the earth's population is killed by that army. So what you've had, you've had a fourth killed during the sealed judgments. You have a third more killed during this time of the trumpet judgments. And that's just talking about the army there that kills that. I don't know how many, but you've got at least half of the earth's population that has been destroyed. And then you get down to the end of chapter 9, and it says, "Neither they repented of their idolatry, their immorality, their sorceries, their drug use is involved in that, pornography, all of that would be involved." They were so caught up in their sin that they just absolutely would not give up. And so once again, here we find ourselves at the end of the sixth trumpet judgment, and we are devastated, really, if you think about it. I mean, we know that God is in control, but you know, we've seen a lot of people die lately of the hardships that we're going through. We feel the pain of that. But just reading through this and realizing that half of the earth's population will be destroyed by this point of the tribulation period, we need that parenthesis of God's grace. And God very graciously comes back and gives us another parenthesis of grace. And that's what Revelation chapter 10 and Revelation 11 is. It's a parenthesis, or part of 11, is a parenthesis of God's grace. So I want you to take your Bible, and I hope that helps you to catch up, to see where we are and why we need Revelation 10 so desperately. Revelation 10, if you've got your Bible open, I will read there what the word of God says. "And I saw another mighty angel come down from heaven, clothed with a cloud, and a rainbow was upon his head; and his face was as it were the sun, and his feet as pillars of fire. And he had in his hand a little book, open; and he set his right foot upon the sea and his left foot on the earth." And that's a great scene. Look at that, such a large angel, that he is able to put one foot on the land and one foot out in the sea, coming to say, you know, God's still in control. Okay? And the angel cried with a loud voice, as when a lion roareth. And when he had cried, seven thunders uttered their voices. And when the seven thunders had uttered their voices, "I was about to write, and I heard a voice from heaven saying to me, 'Seal up those things which the seven thunders uttered, and write them not.'" So although this is the book of Revelation, the revelation of the Lord Jesus Christ, Apokalypsis, the revelation of Christ, here is an instance in the book of Revelation where John is not allowed to reveal to us the things that are said. And that's very interesting. It's a mystery, and this is a sort of a mysterious chapter. And we'll talk about that just a little bit, about the mystery of this. But John says, "I was about to write, and I heard a voice from heaven saying to me, 'Seal up those things which the seven thunders uttered, and write them not.'" "And the angel which I saw, stand up on the sea and upon the earth, lifted up his hand to heaven, and swear by him that liveth forever and ever, who created heaven and the things that therein are, and the earth and the things that therein are, and the sea and the things which are therein, that there should be time no longer." And that word "there" for "time no longer" means there should be no more delay, that this is the time when God's about to come down, Christ is about to come down and take His kingdom back. That's what the title deed to the earth is all about. We talked about that early on. This scroll that's being unrolled is the title deed to the earth, that man lost in the garden of Eden, and the Lord Jesus Christ is taking it back. And this angel is saved. He's lifting up his hand and swearing by him that liveth forever, who created heaven, and saying, "There's going to be no more delay. The Lord is about to come and take the kingdom back." And so these judgments are going to come very rapidly toward the end, leading us to the coming, the second coming of the Lord Jesus. So he said, "There will be no more delay, no more delay. But in the days of the voice of the seventh angel, when he shall begin to sound, the mystery of God should be finished." That's a very interesting line, and you would want to underline it in your Bible, that when he's about to sound, "The mystery of God should be finished, as he hath declared to his servants the prophets." Okay? So that's an interesting line, and we're going to talk about that just in a little bit. But just make a note of that, that he's talking about, he's saying that the days of the voice of the seventh angel, "When he shall begin to sound, the mystery of God should be finished." And so there's a mystery. There's a mystery up above, that he did not tell us what the angel said. And then again, he tells us what he is saying here, talking about the mystery of God that should be finished. "He hath declared to his servants the prophets." So the prophets that talk, that spoke in Old Testament, he has revealed this mystery somewhat to them, and that they preached things that were true. But now here comes the finishing of what was a mystery somewhat in the Old Testament. "And the voice which I heard from heaven spake unto me again, and said, 'Go and take the little book, which is open in the hand of the angel, which standeth upon the sea and upon the earth.' And I went unto the angel and said unto him, 'Give me the little book.' And he said it to me, 'Take it and eat it up.'" Okay? So he's telling John to take the book and to swallow it up, to eat it up, to take it and to ingest it. "And it shall make thy belly bitter, but it shall be in thy mouth sweet as honey." "And I took the little book out of the angel's hand and ate it up; and it was in my mouth sweet as honey; and as soon as I had eaten it, my belly was bitter. And he said unto me, 'Thou must prophesy again before many peoples, and nations, and tongues, and kings.'" And so tonight, we're going to look at some of these mysteries and try to look and see this as a... When you just read this, like, what in the world does all of this mean? And we're going to try to make as much sense out of it as we can. There's some of it that's closed up, that I couldn't dare tell you what it says. The Lord wouldn't even let John tell us. So we don't know what is being said there. But there are some mysteries, the mystery of the mighty angel. That's number one, who is the mighty angel that is there? Then the mystery of God, which the angel proclaims, that we don't really know what he says. And then finally, the mystery of that little scroll that is held in the angel's hand, what is there? So we want to look at that. The idea of the mystery, here's something that Apostle Paul said in 2 Corinthians chapter 12. He said that in 2 Corinthians chapter 12, when he's talking about when he's called up to heaven, there were things that were unlawful for him to repeat. 2 Corinthians 12:4, "He was not able to tell us everything." And so there are times when God will withhold things. There's times when God doesn't want us to yet know things, and he won't tell us. Like in Juteronomy 29, verse 29, "The secret things belong to the Lord, our God; but the things that are revealed belong to us and to our children forever." So there are times when God will reveal certain things. And even though we're in the revelation, there are some things here that God does not totally reveal. And so we want to take what we can and learn as much as we can. Now, I want to go back to Revelation 10, verse 1, and I want to talk about this angel. Let's look at the angel first of all and see some of his qualities and some of the descriptions of the angel. "I saw another mighty angel come down from heaven, clothed with a cloud." So he's large enough that there's a cloud that are his clothes. So we think about that, he's coming in a cloud. He's clothed with a cloud. "And a rainbow was upon his head." And this word for rainbow is the word iris. It's where we get that, that shows the color in our eye, the iris. It's that comes from that word, that Greek word. And so it is talking about the colorful halo that is around the head of that angel. So the cloud is his clothing, a huge, not a rainbow like we see in an art, but one around his head, that is a halo around his head, a rainbow around his head. "And his face was as it were the sun; and his face is shining like the sun, and his feet as pillars of fire." And so we have a description here of a mighty angel, big enough to put one foot on the land, one foot on the sea. The cloud is his clothing, and a rainbow is the halo around his head. "His face is shining as bright as the sun, and his feet as pillars of fire." And so this description, automatically, we're going to look at this and think, "Man, this has to be the Lord Jesus Christ." And so it's a mystery somewhat, and I'm not going to give you an answer fully. I'm just going to give you some of the possibilities. This is either the Lord Jesus Christ, or it is an angel, and they are different people. Some scholars will say, "I think this is Christ." Others will say, "This is an angel that the Lord is giving great authority." And most would probably lean toward the fact, toward the idea that this is just an angel, that God has given the qualities of the Lord Jesus Christ, because there are several reasons. But I will share, first of all, some of the things about the mystery of this angel. Dr. Paige Patterson, he wrote this. He says, "It's impossible to make an absolute identification of this angel." "His personal preference is that since the appearance of the Lord elsewhere in the book is largely undebatable, this angel is one of great prestige and authority, that he is called an angel is not determinative one way or the other, but it must favor the view that this is not Christ." And so Paige Patterson would say, "This is not Christ." John MacArthur would talk about it this way, and I'll give you some... He would say, "The Greek word there for another." When he says, "I saw another angel," is the word "allois," and that means another, another of the same kind. And when he's talking about an angel, he's referring back to those other angels, specifically the one in Revelation chapter 5, where he says, "I saw another angel, another of the same kind." And certainly, the Lord Jesus Christ wouldn't be just an angel of the same kind. So if it was a different kind, he would use the word heteros. He used the word allois. And so then there's another point by MacArthur, that any time Jesus appears in Revelation, John the Revelator gives him a clear and unmistakable title. He talked about him as the faithful witness, the amen, the line of the tribe of Judah, the root of David, the Lamb, and so on. And then also, there are other strong angels in the book of Revelation who have great power and great ability, who have some of the qualities of Christ, who are just strong angels. And you find that in Revelation 5, verse 2, Revelation 18, verse 21. And MacArthur believes it is inconceivable that Jesus the Christ, the second person of the Trinity, could make an oath that this angel makes in verse 5 and 6, where he swears by himself. But then you find in Hebrews, that since the Lord could find none other that was worthy for him to swear by, that he did swear by himself in the book of Hebrews. So we see that. "This angel came down out of heaven to earth." If this is Christ, John MacArthur says, "This would add another coming of Christ to the earth." That's not foretold in Scripture. So I see the point here, that he's saying that we have the rapture of the Lord, we have the second coming, and if this is the Christ that comes down all the way to the earth and sets his foot upon the land, and his foot upon the sea, this would cause there to be three comings of the Lord, which are not mentioned in the Bible. So most scholars would say, you know, this is not Christ, but rather an angel. But then you've got Warren Wiersby and others who will talk about this and give us points of how this possibly could be Christ. Okay? So he says, number one, he's strong like Christ. "The last time we saw a rainbow, it was around the throne of God in chapter 4. Now it is a crown on the head of this messenger, perhaps signifying that he's being given the authority of God." The clouds, Jesus ascended into heaven in the clouds and will return in the clouds, just as he left. "The angel's face shines as the sun," corresponding to the description of Jesus in Revelation 1, verse 16. The description of the angel's feet corresponds to the description of Jesus' feet in Revelation chapter 1 and verse 15. The voice like a lion reminds us that Jesus is described as the lion of the tribe of Judah. And in the Old Testament, Jesus appeared several times and was called the angel of the Lord. Now, otherwise, we don't know of, when the Lord appears in the New Testament, he's always identifiable. He's not just the angel of the Lord. This would be the only time if this were to be indeed the Christ. Wiersby says, "The book in his hand," that we learned in Revelation chapter 5, verse 5, that Jesus was the only one worthy to take the scroll and open it. It might be extrapolated that Jesus is the only one worthy to give his servant, John, the revelation. So to give him the book, when he says to take it, to eat it. "The angel's stance is one of a victor, a conqueror, who is taking possession of the territory he has conquered. Only Jesus holds the title deed to the earth, the sea, and the sky." And so we see that. "Jesus' face shone like the sun at Transfiguration." Do you remember that? When Peter, James, and John were upon the mountain of Transfiguration? And Jesus' face shone like the sun. In eternity, there'll be no need for the sun, because Jesus will be the light. So we see that. And we also know that when Moses came down from the mountain, his face shone like the sun, and that they could not even look upon him. So it is possible for the Lord to take his brightness and reflect that on an angel and reflect that on another being, as Moses, his face shone so bright that they could not even look upon him. And then the Scripture says that "The righteous will shine like the sun in eternity." So we see, you know, and let me just say this. My feeling is this, I cannot say absolute for certain if this is Jesus or if this is just an angel. But it's more important to me right now in looking at this to say, what is the reflection of this angel? What is he saying? He's saying that in the middle of all of this chaos, when half of the world's population has been destroyed, here is the angel of the Lord. He puts one foot on the land, one foot on the sea, and he's saying, "I am in control. I've got it all in control." And the Lord is saying that right at that time, to say, "Oh, I'm coming to take over, and I'm taking care of business." Okay? So in Revelation, then, 10, verse 4, "When the seven thunders had uttered their voices, I was about to write; and I heard a voice from heaven saying unto me, 'Seal up those things which the seven thunders uttered, and write them not.' And the angel which I saw, stand up on the sea, upon the earth, lifted up his hand to heaven, and swore by him that liveth forever and ever, who created heaven and the things that therein are, and the earth and the things that therein are, and the sea and the things which are therein, that there should be no more delay or time no longer." Okay? "But in the days of the voice of the seventh angel, when he shall begin to sound, the mystery of God should be finished, as he hath declared to his servants the prophets." And so what we're seeing here is we have somewhat of a mystery. Is this Jesus or is it the angel? Either way, the angel is a direct representative of Christ in his power. And so he's there representing Christ, or it is the Christ. And he says that he is coming, when the angel sounded, this mystery that was revealed to the servants, the prophets, that time would be no more, and that the Lord would... that he would sound, the mystery of God would be finished. So there's this mystery of God that's been going on throughout all of history, that he said that was declared to his servants, the prophets. Okay? So we want to look at this kind of thing and see some of the things that the word of God has talked about. Well, one of the things that's a mystery, and I'll talk about it a little bit more just in a little bit, is there's a mystery in the word of God about how God operates salvation, that he started out revealing himself through the Jews, and that he allowed the Gentiles to be engrafted in, and that he then is dealing with the Jews during the tribulation period. And he reestablishes his covenant with Israel, and he's calling them back to himself. Now, the church has been raptured in heaven, up to heaven. Many of those tribulation saints have been saved, and their souls are in heaven. God has preached, he has put a seal of God in the foreheads of 144,000 Jewish witnesses. In Revelation 11, he's about to have Moses and Elijah. And I don't know like the chronological order of all of this, but you have Moses and Elijah who are going to preach like never before. God is doing something amazing in reaching out to the Jewish people and reaching out to the earth as a whole. And so this mystery was how God dealt with us through the Jews. Why did he choose them? And then why in the world did he ever allow the rest of us to become a part of the family of God in salvation? And so God is going to reveal some of these things. There's a lot of mysteries in the world. The mystery of why does God allow suffering? Why does God allow Satan to do some of the things that he does? And you know how we pray, "Lord, thy will be done, thy kingdom come." This is the picture of God coming in to take over. And he's just saying, "I have got it in control, and I'm going to reveal it." And he's just saying, I have got it in control, and I'm going to reveal to you some of these mysteries that were, were spoken to, to the prophets, but not fully revealed. And there's some things, you know, that were a mystery, the, the mystery of those things that were concealed in the Old Testament, revealed in the New Testament. And so he has those things that were concealed, somewhat spoken about, predicted, and then he begins to reveal those in the New Testament. And then there is a great revelation of those mysteries when the tribulation period occurs. And although he doesn't tell us all about it right here, he is revealing that in this little book, that we don't really know all of the things that are occurring. So in chapter 36 of Ezekiel, there's a vivid description of how, just how God will begin his kingdom on earth, and how the Lord will come down and establish that millennial reign, and will reestablish, and he'll rule from Jerusalem. So there's definitely, there's definitely a Jewish emphasis in the tribulation. And he's going to come back and rule from Jerusalem. Well, in, in Romans, chapter 11, did you know that Romans, you know, Paul talks about all these things about salvation? But then there's this little parentheses in the book of Romans. Romans 9 through 11 is specifically Jewish, and he's talking to the Jews, although it has application to the rest of us in salvation, like Romans 10 and 9, that thou shalt confess with thy mouth the Lord Jesus, and shalt believe in thy heart that God raised him from the dead, thou shalt be saved. But he's talking, there's a Jewish parentheses in there. And in Romans, chapter 11, verse 25 through 27, Paul says, I do not want you to be ignorant of this mystery. There it is, brothers, so that you may not be conceited. Israel has experienced a hardening in part until the full number of the Gentiles has come in. And so all Israel will be saved, as it is written. The deliverer will come from Zion. He will turn godlessness away from Jacob, and this is my covenant with them, when I take away their sins. So I know that this mystery is spoken about in the word of God, about how the Lord will deal with Israel. Like in Isaiah 35, strengthen the feeble hands, steady the knees that give way. Say to those with fearful hearts, be strong, do not fear. Your God will come, he will come with vengeance, with divine retribution, he will come to save you. Then will the eyes of the blind be opened, and the years of the death unstopped? Then will the lane leap like a deer, and the tongue of the dumb shout for joy? Water will gush forth in the wilderness, and streams in the desert. The burning sand will become a pool, the thirsty ground bubbling springs. In the haunts where jackals once lay, grass and reeds and papyrus will grow. I was listening, just as I was coming home, to Janet Parshall on, in the market, and they were talking about the Jews, and how their eyes are closed, and, and right now, how they celebrate the Hanukkah, and all of that kind of thing. And, but this is the idea of this mystery of how God came, Jesus came to the Jews. They rejected him, their eyes were blinded, he opened up the door for the Gentiles to be engrafted in, and we are engrafted in, and then God will come back and lift the blinders off of the eyes of the Jews. And so we just see the program of God coming to pass. He said, I put my foot on one, on the land, foot on the sea, and I am able to establish and to, to take all of these mysteries and bring those things together. And so we see that, the, this finishing of the mysteries of God. Okay, so I want you to see that, this expression, that the servants, the servants of the prophets, it's a commonly used Old Testament to refer to the prophet God sent to the nation of Israel. And so he's revealed these mysteries that are not fully known. And I don't know what the angel's going to say, I don't know what it says. I wouldn't want to speculate what was being said right there, because the Lord said, John, you don't need to write this down. And it may be because that message may be specifically to the, the nation of Israel. I don't know that, and I'm not speculating on that, but anyway, that is a part of what's happening, it's a mystery. Now, Paul says there is a mystery in Ephesians, chapter 3, verse 6. He says it this way, the mystery is that the Gentiles are fella heirs, members of the same body, and partakers of the promise in Christ through the gospel. The mystery is that God allowed the Gentiles to be a part of the family. It's a mystery, I, we, we don't understand, why did the Lord Jesus ever love us to start with? And why would he send Jesus to the cross? It's a mystery. But he loved us, and he cared for us, and the, and Paul goes on and says, he's broken down the middle wall of division. He's made one new man from the two. He's talking about bringing the church together, Jews and Gentiles together, being built together for a habitation of God in the Spirit. And so some would say that when he puts his, and I'm not trying to say this is exactly what this means, but some would say, when he puts his foot on the land and on the sea, he is saying, I'm in control. I'm controlling the whole earth. But also, the land, he is symbolizing possibly, the Jews, the sea possibly symbolizing the, the, the rest of the population. He said, I've got it all together, it's a mystery, but I'm going to reveal it and bring it all together. And, and why does God, you know, here is God judging sin, he's thrown the devil out of heaven. He, he's, all of these things are occurring, and these mysteries that we don't understand. A lot of people say, why does God allow suffering? Why does God allow the devil to have his way? Why do we have a coronavirus? Why are all these things occurring in the world? And, and these mysteries, God is going to say, hey, I'm not going to tell you yet, I didn't let John write it all down. But I'm coming, and I'm going to say, what, there's going to be a, a good reason of, of this mystery coming together, why the Lord brought it all together. So it, it's just a, a great chapter, you know, when you've got all of this stuff going on, and we just have to trust. You know, it would be, it would be great if I could explain it all to you, but it certainly, if the Lord wouldn't let John write it down, he's not going to let me explain it. And so we, we have to trust. And that's kind of where we are in our society today, you know, we've got all kinds of things going on, and we don't understand a lot. We simply have to trust that God has got one foot on the land, one foot on the sea. He's able to take care of every one of us, and he's going to watch over all of us. The Lord has got it all together. Well, I want to go just a, a little bit more, I, I want to say this, later on, when the seventh angel sounds in Revelation 11, the Bible, Bible says, and there were loud voices in heaven saying, the kingdom of, the kingdoms of this world have become the kingdoms of our Lord and of his Christ. See, this is what, this is about, where we're getting to, God, when we pray, thy kingdom come. That's what we're praying for, when the Lord is ruling, and this angel sounds and shouts out the loud voices, and have the kingdoms of this world have become the kingdoms of our Lord and his Christ. And he shall reign forever and ever. Then the temple of God was open in heaven, and the ark of the covenant was seen in his temple. So that's what this chapter is, is leading up to, is God taking over. And that's really what, what, what it's all about. Well, we get on to Revelation, chapter 10, and verse 8, and the Bible says, and the voice which I heard from heaven spake unto me again, and said, Go and take the little book which is open in the hand of the angel, which standeth upon the sea and upon the earth. And I went unto the angel, and said unto him, Give me the little book. And this is one, one thing that people say, that you don't tell Jesus what to do. So they say, this must have been an angel, because nobody would walk up to Jesus and say, you give me this. But I guess we do that when we pray, but, but he said, you give, give me the little book. And he said unto me, Take it and eat it up, and it shall make thy belly bitter, but it shall be in thy mouth, sweet as honey. And I took the little book out of the angel's hand, and ate it up, and it was in my mouth as sweet as honey. And as soon as I'd eaten it, my belly was bitter. And he said unto me, Thou must prophesy again before many peoples, and nations, and tongues, and kings. Uh, let me go back to an Old Testament passage before I deal with this, and, and tell you a similar thing of how Ezekiel felt when the word of God was, he ingested the word of God, and that's what this is symbolic of, of what, what John is doing, in, in, in gesting the word. He said, in Ezekiel, chapter 2, verse 9, and following, he said, son of man, eat what is before you, eat this scroll. Then go and speak to the house of Israel. So I opened my mouth, and he gave me the scroll to eat. Then he said to me, son of man, eat this scroll I'm giving you, and fill your stomach with it. So I ate it, and it tasted sweet as honey in my mouth. But then you go, following on in Ezekiel 3, 14. And Ezekiel says, then the spirit then lifted me up, and I went in bitterness, and in the anger of my spirit, with the strong hand of the Lord upon me. Well, this is what, what I believe this is showing us, is that when you take the word of God, if you know the Lord, and you take in the word of God, it's sweet, it's sweet. It, it provides blessing for us, it, it talks to us about our eternity. It talks to us about the love of God, talks to us about his goodness, talks to us about his comfort. And it's just so sweet when we take the word of God. But then when you ingest it, and it stays there, and you really let it work on you, when you see the goodness of the word, it begins to be like a sword, and it cuts, and it slices, and it divides asunder, and it convicts us of our sin. But then when you're like John here, where you're going to have to turn around and prophesy that word to a lost and dying world. It's like sometimes the hardest messages for the preacher to preach is a message of God's judgment. And you come down and you preach, and you walk away feeling almost sick in your stomach. You know, you just feel like, you feel like, oh, this hurts, because you're having to tell people that if they don't obey the word of God, they're going to go to hell. And, and, and that's not an easy message, it's just a true message. So when John took the word, he's like Ezekiel, he takes it into his mouth, and it's sweet. And it's like, man, this is the comfort of the word, and the promises, and the open mysteries of God, and what he's doing. But then when he ingests it, and see the word of God says, take it, eat it up, and it shall make thy belly bitter, but it shall be in thy mouth sweet as honey. And I took the little book out of the angel's hand and ate it up, and it was in my mouth, sweet as honey. And as soon as I'd eaten it, my belly was bitter. And he said unto me, Thou must preach. And John goes on, you know, in Revelation 11 and following, with these prophecies of, of, of trying to call people back to God, but preaching the judgment of God upon the world. And so it is, when he shares that to all peoples, and nations, and tongues, and kings, it's sweet in his own mouth. And he convicts his heart, but not only that, he has to share that message of judgment with a world that, like we found in Revelation 8, that would not repent. They, they would not repent of their sin. And so we, we, we live in a world today where we see evidence of that, that people turn their back upon God, and they just turn away. And we preach the truth, and they turn away with a hardness of heart. So if you're out there today, and you don't know the Lord as your Savior, I, I, I just, you know, I don't know what sin has blinded your eyes, or what sin keeps you away from God. The devil has a way of blinding people, and hardening people's hearts, and deceiving people to the place that they don't feel, they don't feel anything. And I just pray that as you think about all the things that are coming, do you want to be here when half of the world's population is destroyed? And to be so hard-hearted, that you're so caught in sin, that you will not repent, even with all of that going on? And you know, we see all of these things that are happening in our world today with so many, have you, how many of our government leaders, have you seen, have you seen, just get, get on their face before God, and say, what our nation needs is to turn back to God? And yet, you know, we, we depend on our scientists, we depend upon our politicians, we depend upon our money, we depend upon the government to hand us out a check, we, boy, that'll solve my problems if I can just get so-and-so to decide to give me a little bit more money. And yet, we just get sucked into this attitude that, that we forget God. And one of these days, God is going to step right out of heaven, whether it's an angel or him. In Revelation, chapter 10, the Lord Jesus Christ is one foot on the land and one foot on the sea. My Bible tells me in Philippians, that every knee, one of these days is going to bow, and every tongue is going to confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of the Father. Let's pray again. Father, we thank you, Lord, for the day, we thank you for your word. God, your word is so good, it gives us great comfort to know that even in the middle of the tribulation, you still can step right out of heaven and say, I am in control, and I'm taking over. We thank you and praise you, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.